Afternoon. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First People's traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. And with that, I'd call today's committee of the whole meeting to order. Uh first order of business is a job adoption of the agenda to council or are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing them from council administration, are there any changes?
None from administration.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Michaels.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move to adopt the agenda uh for August twenty second, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call back to question please if we can see motion. Councilor Levers, are you signing in? Sorry, I'm muted.
Sorry, I'm signing in. I'm in favor of that. I'll be in for the next vote.
Okay, thank you. So that's carried unanimously. Uh with that, we'll move on to citizens' minute with council. Seeing no citizens present, are there any who requested to join my vote by Zoom? Nope. Okay, so we will move on to delegations and presentations, which we have none on the agenda today. So that brings us to our first action item five point one, amend the town of Hinton signage standards manual. Administration.
Charlotte, was Director Juuk able to join us too?
I haven't seen her yet.
Okay, Lori, we'll uh work through this as best I can for committee. So the item before you uh is looking for uh two actions. One is that there be an immediate amendment to the town of Hinton signage standards. And secondly, that the signage standards with alternative post types come to a future committee meeting for further discussion. Uh the reason for the urgency and having this before the committee is, you're aware, we uh filed for the Enred grant and we were successful in it. And part of the grant, it was made up of three portions. But and one of it was to assist with offsetting the cost of fixing the signage by the uh chamber out of the Green Square. So that directional signage. So this is the uh the reason for that urgency is the grant must be completed before February twenty twenty-four in order to capitalize on using those monies. And with that, we've got packages of any questions from committee.
Okay, uh I do have a question to administration. If if Ms. Juuk would be beneficial for her to join, we could table this until later in the meeting. If she's if she's planning to to be here.
Through the committee, I have no problem with that. I was uh informed that her plan was to attend by June by Zoom and all of the links were sent out. But I myself personally haven't reached her today, so I'm uncertain if she's having connectivity issues. Um maybe possibly due to the fires or some other event that I'm unaware of. Uh so it's that it's up to committee. Um if you want me to try and and answer any questions that you'd have, or we could certainly move it until the yeah later in the agenda.
Yeah, so I guess to committee then, did we want to try and tackle this now? Or did we want to enable it and see if Ms. Juuk's able to join later in the meeting?
Mayor Michaels, I think, Mr. Chair, I had no personal questions for this. I was comfortable moving forward with the recommendation. So unless there's um questions that uh we're seeking an answer to, I'd be comfortable moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, if there's no opposition and no other thoughts from committee, then we will just carry forward. Are there any comments or questions, Councilor House?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, um because I too don't have anything in regards to uh you know, the signage. I just want to clarify that we're looking. It was brought to us at least a meeting or two meetings previous that a look at what the signage might look like at Green Square specifically. I think that's one of the reasons for this. Um is that the design we were going for? Just to, so I have it in my head, is what would it look different?
Uh through the committee, my understanding was the serious concern was the log posts and whether or not they should be in the metal or if they should be maintained differently.
Okay. So if I may, Mr. Chair, um because the immediate signage, so it's still coming to us in regards to uh post alternatives. That the discussion will include what that that signage might look like. This is something different. And then we'll still be discussing the look of it, the post and stuff later date. Uh is that?
That is my understanding best that I got from reading the report.
Okay. Good with me?
Thank you, Councilor Ross. Councilor Levers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I I do have a quick question, I guess. On page four, um under two B there. Um it's talking about trail signage and it's talking about retaining the peeled log now. The whole discussion through this thing is the maintenance is expansive. We don't get around to it, these things. Did why would the recommendation be on this one particular sign to retain the peeled log? It just seems funny if we're going to move away from that, that in one sign, oh sorry, one classification assigned, we would retain that peeled log. I'm curious why.
Due to committee, I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that. I could sort of sit out and send it to all of committee.
Okay, thank you. More curiosity than anything.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Levers. Eddie, are there any other comments, questions, or views, direction?
Michaels. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh with that, I'll put forward the recommended action that council referred this issue of immediate amendments to the town of Hinton signage standards manual. We further meeting of council as presented and that committee referred the issue of amending the town of Hinton signage standards manual with alternative post types to a future meeting of committee for further discussion and I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Michaels. Eddie, we do have the uh direction request. Any comments or questions? Uh yeah, it was just the recommended action. Mayor Michaels.
Correct, yeah. Uh, I'll just start there. The recommended action on the first page of the report.
Page three, yeah, picture.
It's the first two of there.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, yeah.
Of course, Mayor Michaels. Uh yes, Mr. Chair. Okay, thank you. Uh so I will turn it over to committee here. Are there any comments or questions before we call this action request to vote? Seeing none, if we can see the motion please. Many refer the issue of immediate amendments to the town of Hinton signage standards manual to a future meeting of council as presented. And that committee refer the issue of amending the town of Hinton signage standards manual with alternative post types to a future meeting of committee for further discussion. Eddie, please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Is there anything further regarding action item five point one before we move on? Seeing nothing, we'll move to five point two, draft Hinton Youth Advisory Council bylaw update. Administration.
Thank you, committee, and I will turn this item over to our FCS as assistant manager, uh Ms. Gagnon.
Uh, thank you. Uh so we're bringing this before committee today to do an amendment to the Intune Advisory Council bylaw in terms of reference in regards to project hours. Um we found as adult administrators on the youth council over the past two years, there's been a significant imbalance in youth council participation in the project. So we're looking to um address that issue prior to moving into the new term, which begins in October. So we're not, what we're asking to do is just utilize two hours from the volunteer component into the annual project. So we're not asking for anything additional, just some re-allocation so that we do have some incentive for the youth to actively participate in the project. Open any questions?
Great. Hey, thank you. Uh committee, are there any comments, questions? Councilor House.
Um, uh and and I totally agree with that, being a member of that committee. Uh I just am curious, are you also asking for uh some input or change to uh the maximum amount of meetings uh that are uh very to miss? Is that also part of the?
Uh that was something that Director Juuk had also pledged because she found the previous terms of reference to be confusing in that aspect.
Okay.
So she is suggesting that we change it to three consecutive unexcused absences versus three absences in total, because as she pointed out, if somebody's sick, that's not really uh an unexcused absence. So uh we are asking for some clarity with that as well to to state that it's three unexcused, not just three absences per term.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, um so I'm looking at seven point three, point one, seven point three, point two. Those are the two options that we're saying that either it's two or three?
Uh yeah, that's what we're, that's what we had looked at.
Okay. And what is, if I may, what is right, what is the recommendation of administration? Is it, are you more inclined to do the two or the three? As one says, it's permitted a maximum of two consecutive unexcused, and then one says three.
Um I I think I would suggest three.
Okay.
Um just, we have about ten meetings per term, so I think a seventy percent participation rate would be acceptable.
And if I may, I I concur with that. I think we're also uh our youth have other activities that sometimes take them away from, uh you know, and so I think being flexible that way uh can also assist as well, so.
Thank you, Councilor Ross. Councilor Levers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I guess now I'm a little confused because aren't those two clauses, isn't it both of them? It's two consecutive or three in the total term. Isn't that what those two clauses say?
Administration.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Levers. Um through the committee, yes, though, because we have ten meetings. I believe it is written to say that you can miss two unexcused absences per term, but then if you come for a meeting, you reset the clock, so you could miss three unexcused absences.
Okay.
And.
Thank you. Right? Anything else, committee? Any other comments or questions? Posed direction, Mayor Michaels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll put forward the recommended action that Kennedy referred to amending of the terms of reference in by law eleven sixty-nine, Hinton Youth Advisory Council, to a future regular meeting of council as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Michaels. Did you want to speak to it? No, I'm good. Thank you. Hey, committee, there is proposed direction. Uh, one minute, Mayor Michaels. Indeed. Okay, thank you, Mayor Michaels. Uh, committee, are there any comments or questions before we call this to vote? Okay, seeing nothing from committee, we can see the proposed direction. Many refers the amending of the terms of reference in by law one one six nine, Hinton Youth Advisory Council to a future regular meeting of council as presented. Please vote now. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Anything further for the action item five point two? Okay, that moves us on to actually item five point three, draft traffic by law one one seven nine. Administration.
Uh, thank you, committee, and I will turn this over to Director DeBodak.
Thank you. I, thank you, committee, for hearing us today. In advance, I apologize for the tardiness on this item. Uh, this was quite an undertaking to do research for this particular by law. Uh administration presenting draft traffic by law of seven seventy-nine with the recommended action that committee refers to draft traffic by law to a future regular meeting of council. Uh the existing traffic by law ten twenty-three was reviewed and edited. Uh and the key changes being proposed are the lowering of the speed limit in residential areas to forty kilometers an hour. Consolidation of playground zones and school zones. The inclusion of e-bikes into the bicycle sections of by law. And mirroring the provincial regulations for e-bikes. Uh, the change of parking on Carmichael and Smith Streets. The inclusion of e-carts uh used by Pine Valley Lodge on restricted routes. And the increases of specific uh or the specified penalties, right? Uh to align with the penalties designated in provincial traffic. Additionally, section three, administration outlines more clearly the authority given to the C A O or any person acting on behalf of the C A O uh to give them the ability to make changes to signage, parking, traffic direction. Uh, truck routes, playground zones, et cetera, without the need to open up the by law and change the by law each time a change is made. And committee has had a chance to review this by law, so without getting into the minutia too much, I will open up for any questions I have.
All right, thank you, Chief. Uh, committee, are there any comments or questions? Councilor Ross and then Councilor Levers.
I guess my first question is, um, I know you're recommending the lower speed limits on residential streets. Can we discuss that? I'm just curious if any work was done on the cost that that might entail. Because I imagine from base, what I'm reading here, like signage would have to change um and things like that. So would that be something we would have to direct uh to bring a report back, or is is put administration prepared to do that?
Uh, thank you for that question to all the committee. Uh, yes, there would be a cost of changing signage, of course. Uh, on the entrances to all major entrances in the town, we would have to erect signage that says the speed limit is forty kilometers an hour unless the device posted. And so that would be the main entries into town. I think there's about four, two or four. Okay, uh and then in the other, every listed area where it indicates fifty kilometers now, we would have to change that to forty. So there would be an increase to the expenditure percentage.
If I may, uh because that was, I think, Councilor Stasher brought that up under the first, under the initial conversation. So it's not enough to just put them at the entrance, and so we have to actually change all the signage within the town. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Ross. Councilor Levers.
Thank you. Uh so Director DeBodak dropped, um would there be any consideration of treating Mountain Hardisty and McLeod any differently? Are those considered residential streets?
Thank you to all committee. Uh yes, that there are certain routes in town, uh Mountain being one of them, Hardisty being another one. Uh when there is no parking on Hardisty on the other side of the road, uh those would remain at fifty kilometers an hour. Uh it would only be the, and their major feeder roads for the residential areas. So it would be the roads, the subsidiary roads off of those roads that we reduce to forty kilometers an hour.
Thank you. I like that better.
Okay, you're good, Councilor Levers.
I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ross.
Um, yeah, in regards to Carmichael Lane and Smith Street and the parking, which I I do concur that that can be quite a uh bottleneck there. I guess my only question, as we're looking at changing rules and and regulations means more enforcement. And I guess that's where I'm wondering, I agree with the recommendation, but is there a plan in place to enforce that change um in place? Because I don't want to set a rule and then, you know, we don't have the means to enforce it. So any thoughts on that?
Uh, thank you for the question. Uh to all the committee, uh the that is a very, very big question because uh enforcement of those areas now is at best at certain uh times of the day when we know we have congestion problems or violation problems uh with parking what's called left of center. So we're partnering with who said. Um with this change, I would suggest that uh if if we, it is implemented that we have parking on only one side of the road, that it be on the highway side of the road, and we would permit the trucks to park in either direction.
Nice.
Along along those road, two roads certified that they would be allowed to park left of center if they chose to, and they would not be permitted to park on the other side of the road. That's the only place that we can take.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, with someone else with you, I'd like to all on that. I didn't realize, obviously, the, how he has the power to do that, then that's not in contravention, you know, the traffic character, anything?
It it would be, but we do have, the C A O has the authority to make these roads for municipal roads that can go beyond the traffic and, but it have to, has to be signed properly and indicated. Uh like, uh with the crosshatching or like it's a parking zone, not a, not a road.
All right. Okay, that's great. That's good news because that was one of the concerns that some of the heavy truck traffic might have to go all the way around to get facing the right ways to park. So that's great. Okay, thank you. Uh, committee, are there any other, Councilor Levers?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I do have one question. So on page ninety-eight, where you're talking about e-bikes and you say that it must bear a label that in both official languages that states that this is an e-bike, I mean. Uh so so if a citizen has an e-bike and they've taken the label off, they're not allowed to use it in town. It just seems a, that seems a funny rule. Uh is that the intent that if that label were off, they just wouldn't be allowed to use the bike in town? Or they'd have to buy a new label?
Uh, thank you for the question to all the committee. Uh, those labels are applied to the bicycles by the manufacturer to indicate that it's an except for acceptable use in Canada. It doesn't necessarily mean it's for acceptable use in Alberta. But it does mean that it's acceptable in Canada. Uh and it has to be in both official languages. If that decker was missing, I really wouldn't worry about it. But if if we spotted a bike that looks homemade, uh is more of a hot rod than a, than a than a bike, an e-bike, uh that is one measurement tool that is to indicate whether it's a homemade bike or whether it was from manufacturer. So that's in the Alberta regulations as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Ross.
And that, that's important to clarify. The intent is not to do anything different than the province is already doing when it comes to the e-bikes. We're not, we're not adding any rules. We can't. And and is it, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the provincial guidelines, we can't lessen the guidelines. We can increase them if we choose to, but we can't lessen them, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh, we can, we can exceed the requirements of the province, but we cannot do anything less. Uh and I deliberately wrote uh into the by law, the e-bikes to mirror what the province is doing and not um putting any by law infractions so much as provincial infractions. Uh so if if the by law regulations change in the province of Alberta, it would change for the town of Hinton without opening our by law. Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilor Levers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have, I do have one more um question. So se- section seventeen talks about lugs. Is that different than studs? I mean, we don't have a problem if a citizen has studded winter tires here, do we? They don't have to go get a C A O uh ladder or anything to have studded winter tires. Correct?
Oh, that is, that is correct. Uh lugs and cleats and chains are completely different than this, your regular studded winter tires.
Okay, thank you.
Tiger chains in town, basically.
Yeah.
Okay, committee, anything else? Comments, questions? Okay.
Mayor Michaels, uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh I'll also do the recommended action, uh committee refer the draft traffic bylaw to a future regular meeting of council. Uh if I may speak to it, Mr. Chair, um uh I want to thank administration for taking the extra time and getting uh what I believe uh is this draft uh right. Uh and I think the community, and I've heard this uh many, many times for the last uh five, six years that they've wanted a reduced speed in their community. Um and um people are, will always hear naysayers and people wanting to speed, but um I've I've heard from countless individuals that they're looking forward to this, and I appreciate the work put into it. And I look forward to supporting this in the future. So uh thank you very much.
Mayor Michaels, Councilor Ross.
Uh, yeah, I I do. I I I'm in favor of this. I guess my question procedurally, though. Um, because I I I agree that that I'd like to see the speed limits reduced. I just also want to have an idea of what that's going to cost the community. Um and is it uh feasible uh for that to come from the uh traffic enforcement, automated traffic enforcement? Would that be fall under that category? Or would be we be looking at a uh a separate capital type budget for a project such as that?
Uh. Thank you for that question. Uh I think that's a fair use of the A T E funds. Um it it enhances pedestrian and driver safety, so it fits right within the criteria of the other requirements for that funding. Um so I would recommend it in the report to council. If if any additional cost for signage uh installed in town come from that budget, so it's not a type of burden. And there is fun.
So if I may follow, so I guess procedurally then going back to is if there's a budgetary impact, do we need to, is it administration with this prepared to bring to regular meeting uh a look at what that's going to cost? Or does it, do we need a separate direction to bring forward a report on on what that cost will look like? Because I don't see the rest of the much of, much of the cost. There, I know there's some signage with the playground and the school thing a bit, but I mean, this, this seems to be the largest of all costs. So is that what administration is prepared to do in the regular meeting of council when brought forward?
It would make it my priority to get that for the regular meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Ross. Uh I would like to add a little bit to that, too, that that you've indicated there, committee requires some crosshatch painting on Carmichael Lane and and Smith Street and signage. So if we could get the, if we're going to bring pricing back for the speed limit changes, if we could get a cost estimate for that too as well, and does administration need that put forward as a direction? I I'm thinking it probably should be. Especially since it's financial. I don't, Councilor Ross, if you wanted to make a direction, I guess we have one.
If I may, I mean, I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, I mean, I think it's reasonable that we pass this one, but we can then, I think afterwards, direct. Yeah, so.
We can come back.
Yeah.
Yep.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Uh, I think I should also include in my report exactly what we go through for signage and crosshatching carpet.
Okay, all right. Okay, I want to see how things shake out, maybe circles back to that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, anything else? Any other comments or questions? Uh, anything else, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll speak to it quickly. This, I'm in favor of seeing this move forward to and looking forward to having it come to us at regular. A couple of these things, as Mayor Michael indicated, the reduced speed limit is something that I've heard uh from a lot of citizens. But as well as the two-way heavy truck uh parking on Carmichael instead some days with the heavy trucks parked on both sides of those streets. It gets awfully narrow and congested and uh runs the risk of have a vehicle incident. Uh, it's because it's simply not wide enough for two vehicles to pass. So I'm looking forward to that too as well as uh. The feedback that I got from citizens that they're looking forward to too. Hey, if there's nothing further from committee, you could see the proposed direction, please. Uh, is that the much of thing there, Michael? It's it's big that committee refers to draft trap by law to a future regular meeting of council. Maybe if there's no further comments or questions, please vote down. And that is carried unanimously. Maybe is there anything further on the trap trap draft traffic by law one one seven nine? We can only move on, counselor house.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to um take a direction to a direct administration. To include. A budget report. Brought back with the draft traffic by law. We need to attach the regular meeting council to that, but uh. I don't know if I can, yeah, see it and then I can. Administration, anything, any additions that would be, like, is one of those on the fly one, so.
Uh, to maybe possibly just um a report on implementation costs.
Thank you, yes.
This is the word budget could probably go, right?
Yeah, that's what I intended. Yes, thank you. Okay. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, counselor house. Okay.
Anyway, you have a proposed direction. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, seeing no comments or questions, if we could. Okay, uh, if there's no comments or questions, if we can see the proposed direction of these. Committee refers administration to include a report on implementation costs brought back with the doubt traffic. That's carried unanimously. Is there anything further for actually five point three drop traffic one one seven nine? And nothing further than we will move on to. Uh, the correspondence and information items six point one mercy and E Q one report. Maybe are there any comments, questions or direction?
We'll just move to. Move to accept uh information item mercy and P Q one report.
Thank you, counselor house. Maybe any comments or questions? Seeing none, uh, please vote down. And that's carried unanimously as well. Thanks to council reporting.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just a couple of things, uh, attended an Ash meeting recently. Um, a lot of great events coming up uh over the next few weeks. Um, there's comedy night coming up in September and there are some great music events, so. Uh, really hoping that uh the community come out, uh, buy, get some tickets. Um, also saw the, glad to see that the boot tour is also coming back to our community as well. So uh, that's coming in September. I also uh passed along uh on Monday, the library board, uh, we have a meeting. And I uh made it a point of passing along the directions from council from our previous meeting. Uh, so that'll be uh obviously the a part of the discussion. Um, and I believe that uh already work is being done to uh um to 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 follow that direction. So looking forward to having that meeting. Um. And I'll, I have a question for uh C E O, but I'll wait until we get to their report. So that's all I had to report. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. No committees in the last uh two weeks. But I did have the privilege yesterday to spend a little bit of time with our fire chief uh. Uh, with our sister city, six units from Japan uh came to visit town hall, the fire hall. Uh, with I believe two administrators, uh, this is in correlation with Harry Collin. So those, uh, they had a great time. Uh, many of them went extremely high in one of the fire trucks, uh, almost too high. Uh, but uh everything was great. They really, really enjoyed uh our time. And just another reminder, I had mentioned it. Um, uh, many municipalities in Alberta are trying to revive their sister city uh connection. One of the challenges here in Hinton is we don't have a Japanese teacher uh anymore in Harry College and they're working on on that, but. Um, they take it extremely serious um on uh over there and we look to do uh the same. So that's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. Counselor Levers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, no committee um work that I've done. I've been off on vacation, but I'll just extend a little bit. Uh, what counselor house was uh talking about and September twenty-third is the Rotary Club's Oktoberfest. Uh, so the audibles will be providing music. Uh, there'll be some German food uh and always great beer. Uh, it's Rotary's biggest fundraiser of the year, uh, fifty dollars, uh, four fifty for a table of ten. So you do save one seat. Um, so um buy your tickets, support Rotary. They do a lot of great work around the community.
Excellent. Thank you, counselor there. Uh, for myself, maybe you have a couple of things. Um, I attended the uh. River Valley Roundup Rodeo this weekend at when at Mary River Park. Uh, it's the first rodeo that's happened, I believe, pretty sure since before COVID, there was the hiatus for a few years. But the committee got together and put that back on. Um, it's a little bit changed up from the traditional rodeo that they used to. Well, this is more of a. More of a Western exposition. It had a quite a few different components to it, including some local events. A ranch rodeo, barrel racing competition, uh, as well as the uh the traditional rodeo or upstart competition. So it was kind of four separate events over three days. So there's an interesting format change and seemed quite successful. So hopefully that happens again uh next year and we can look forward to having a rodeo in Hinton on an annual basis. Other than that, uh, I had a Beaver Boardwalk Committee meeting. Out of that came some information. Uh, the Beaver Boardwalk Committee or the, sorry, the town is going to be seeking some feedback. On uh Beaver Boardwalk and planned uh upgrades and repairs. In preparation for the uh free grant that's being applied for. So just to let everyone know that the registration fair on September fifth. The town will be there set up with a booth for anybody and some information. For anybody who wants to take a look at the future plans for the boardwalk and have any feedback for town, that would be great. And other, oh, sorry. In conjunction with that, I believe there's also going to be an opportunity for a uh. Uh, a online. Survey that citizens can complete, so they can also get their feedback that way as well. So keep your eyes open for that, as well as some other opportunities to give feedback on the future of boardwalking in relation to the pre-grant. Uh, the other thing with the boardwalk was on Sunday, there was a thistle pole organized. And uh, the purpose of the thistle pole is to manually pull Canadian thistle, which is an invasive species. And to try and get rid of it from the boardwalk area. So on Sunday, there were about twelve people who showed up for the thistle pole. And amongst them, they collected fifty garbage bags of thistles from the Beaver Boardwalk area. So that hopefully will do something to help control the spread of that moving forward. Uh, that's all I have to report for the boardwalk and that's it for my reporting. That moves us on to Chief Administrative Officer Report and Status Report.
Uh, thank you, committee. Uh, nothing. Was left from uh C A O Panasik for me to share with you. I'm sure that the time between now and September fifth was short enough that uh it was just chosen to do it then. We did have some developments um that are quite urgent for our budget in the twenty twenty-four year. Um, I believe as committee will recall, we were successful in obtaining a fourteen thousand dollar grant. Towards the purchase of an E V, electric vehicle as part of the climate resiliency fund. Uh, we had anticipated as the money was noted in the twenty twenty-three that it was. Moved the money, the forty-five thousand that had been carried forward for a number of years in budget was earmarked. But left any reserves for that coverage. Uh, we have been in uh contact with the dealership and. Went ahead with. Sourcing an electric vehicle that would qualify under the grant. Uh, timeline given at that point was that the vehicle would be in. February-ish and time for us to meet the requirements of the grant needs to be spent by the end of February twenty twenty-four. Um, the vehicle has arrived and the dealership also, if we take quick action. We can uh apply for an additional ten thousand dollars on the dealership grant for this money. But we need to be making a decision on budget like in the next day or so. So it's an an item that will show up in the twenty twenty-four budget. It had been there in prior years. Um, we're looking at wanting to maximize the twenty-four thousand dollars in grant funding, which would bring the cost of the vehicle down to fifty-four thousand nine hundred. I'm looking for consensus of direction, if you would like administration to move forward rather quickly. The problem here is the dealership grant program changes August twenty fifth. That is the pushing time and and they have no idea until the twenty fifth. What the new grant program looks like. Could be more, it could be less. We have no idea. Um, so all of this kind of came to us uh very quickly Monday midday and uh decided we'd bring it here. Just for a discussion if you're comfortable with administration moving forward on this item, having it in budget, knowing that it's a fifty-four thousand nine hundred. Dollar item on the lines or if you would just like us to. Put it through in budget regular pace and then whatever we don't get to use for grant funding, we we just lose that.
Okay, thank you. So to committee, then I guess we have. Maybe are there any comments, questions, counselor Levers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so a uh E V, what, like, what are we buying for fifty-six thousand?
Through the committee in, uh, and I will probably turn this over. I'll give the history on the budget line and then I will ask my colleague, uh, Mr. McLaughlin to. Time in with everything else, but in twenty twenty, there was a transport van for the maintenance staff. Within the town was the first year that this item that I could find in going back was on the budget. And it was carried forward from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, again in twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-three, we didn't include it as a carry forward or even earmark it. On the budget documents because we were waiting for the completion of the climate resiliency grant that we were going for. The uh, and then the fourteen thousand dollar grant, and I'm sorry, the name of that one escapes me right now. Uh, so we're putting all of these pieces together, coming forward to council in the very near future is the uh report. That we had it, uh, it was mentioned in the um July updates that we received from Atco. Uh, so, so ultimately, it's a transport van for the maintenance. Folks that work within the town of Hinton. It was the one unit that was identified through the Atco report. That would be a viable option to have a note as an electric vehicle. And Mr. McLaughlin, is there anything you'd like to add or not?
Um, I I have all the specifics if you have any specific question, but it's a two thousand twenty-three Ford E Transit. Three fifty cargo van, uh, rear wheel drive. Is what it is.
I could just ask a clar- it's fully electric. It's not a hybrid. Uh, good, counselor Levers.
So there's, there's twenty-four thousand dollars worth of grant money. We're going to put another fifty foot, so it's an eighty thousand dollar transportation van that we're looking to buy.
It it is a, uh, it has a market value selling price of seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. And then we get a, and then there's twenty-four thousand dollars in in grants that come off that. Uh, and then you have to put some taxes and some admin fees back on, which comes to the fifty-four.
No, that's fine. Go ahead, counselor.
Sorry, uh, and it is a follow-up then. So is that ten thousand from the dealership? Is that something that's guaranteed?
Administration.
To our council, uh, we have talked to them and uh it's in their written quote to us and it's their job to to get that. And they have all the confidence that they will get that. And that's why they're trying to urge us to get in and sign. Uh, the paperwork by the twenty-fifth, because that's how they get that, that ten thousand dollars is by having us sign that paperwork. Uh, by the twenty-fifth of August.
If you're good for now, counselor version, you know, move on.
Mayor Michaels, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just to clarify, we're making the purchase of this vehicle. This week or in the next few days. So the only decision you need from council is whether we're going to make a a capital decision. Today. Or if we choose not to, and we just continue, we will. Potentially buy this vehicle in the twenty twenty-four budget at a future date uh without knowing. Uh, what the rebate will be from the dealership. Is that in essence what we're debating today? So.
Do committee, yes.
Okay, so with that being said, unless there's anything further for me, I'd be comfortable waiting, looking at this in the twenty twenty-four budget. We're still, we're we're guaranteed to get the fourteen thousand to be able to apply with and the dealership uh rebates. Um, it sounds like there will be different ones, but we're just weighing on. So unless we're we're completely sure today to make a. Whatever thousand dollar capital decision with no information, like no. Report, I'm kind of comfortable risking the ten thousand and seeing what that will be and um. Making a full decision. It's, that, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Uh, through the council, uh, I fully understand not wanting to make a decision here today. Uh, and they don't know what those changes will be on August twenty-fourth, uh, August twenty-fifth. But could we put forward a full report at next full council meeting for you to uh make a decision on there? And if, you know, that, then that way that you're reviewing it in about three weeks' time and the vehicle hopefully will still be there. And you can review a full report at that meeting.
Mayor Michaels, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I'll put forward a direction to uh direct administration to bring a report on the electric vehicle. Uh, rebate uh to the September fifth uh council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Michaels. We do have a direction request. We have some people in queue, I myself, counselor house and then counselor. I appreciate the the direction request, Mayor Michaels put forward, being committee of the whole week, can make that. I'll be sitting here today anyway, but um I I did have a question though. Is is the purchase of this van in the twenty twenty-three budget already? Because you said it was in and then it carried over, carried over, carried over. Because you said it was in and then it carried over, carried over, carried over, so is it currently budgeted?
Through the committee, no, it's not. It's not in the twenty twenty three budget. The notation on the twenty twenty two budget is to leave the funds earmarked in the reserves for twenty twenty four.
Okay, okay. And speaking to the proposed direction, I've always supported having come to come back to a regular council meeting. Said with a full report, so we can have a good understanding of what's involved and and where the funding is coming from and and everything else, all those details. Counselor Haas.
Yeah, well, and I appreciate Counselor Stashak mentioning, because this is a a regular uh discussion, however. Is there anything stopping administration to sign to see if we even get the ten thousand at this time? Did that be part of the report, whether or not we were able to get that? Like, is there anything stopping you? From doing that as a uh a possibility, right? I mean. Because I don't think we signed off on the fourteen thousand dollar grant, we just we just applied for it, got it. So I I guess that's my question is is uh in the meantime, because maybe we'll know, we get that ten thousand before the report comes to us. Knowing that we have X amount of dollars, so.
Through the committee, it was uh my feelings as well as my colleagues' feelings that um to proceed and and take that route. Was essentially making an unauthorized purchase, uh because to sign those documents. I would be using my signing authority for the town of Hinton without approval.
Okay, so if I may, so you so we're actually purch- you're agreeing to purchasing it and then to see if you get the grant. Okay, that I get. I I thought it was a, you know, here, let's see if we can get that before the purchase, uh but I get that now, so I appreciate that. Clarification, so but I'm in and I'm in support of this uh as well. We can take a look at it in three weeks and see where we're at, so.
Yeah, if I could ask a follow up question to that, then that to me would be. More of a rebate conditional on purchase, so when you sign the, when you sign the purchase agreement, there's a ten thousand dollar. Uh rebate purchaser for whatever the reasoning is, green vehicle or whatever, uh for for to count that we made something, I'm assuming that's what that is.
Through the committee, in my conversations with the dealership, they did say it was from the federal government, so I took that as a. Grant rebate, um I think either term would apply, but. They require the commitment that the per- that the vehicle is sold prior to making that application.
Yeah, so it is time to the purchase of the vehicle. Okay, yeah, thank you. Counselor Levers.
Uh thanks, Mr. Chair. No, my question was the same as yours. Thank you.
Uh committee, are there any other comments or questions? Hey, you can see the proposed direction, please. The rebates. To the September fifth regular council meeting. Uh Counselor Haas.
Uh sorry, but is rebate or is it the actual vehicle itself?
Mayor Michaels. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh if 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 administration believes that they need extra uh verbiage in order to. Kind of uh take what we've discussed and uh I'm amenable, but I I think it's understood that we're bringing back. Uh a report on the uh electric vehicle rebate, not excluding other stuff, limited to it. Thank you.
So is that um a clear understanding then of what committee's asking for, what committee's considering? Okay, are there any other comments or questions then? Okay, seeing none, if we could uh bring that forward to vote, please. The committee direct administration to bring a report on EV rebate to the September fifth regular council meeting committee, if you would like to vote now, please. Now that's carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Uh CEO officers, CEO reporting the status report, anything further?
Uh no, just thank you to committee with a latitude. It was rather unorthodox item and uh we. Went around on how to bring it forward to you, so I appreciate the latitude. Other than that, I believe the counselor has had a question for.
Yep, Counselor Haas, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um and it's not something you have to speak to tonight, I just don't wanted to bring attention and see if there's any. Um uh insight from administration, but I was reading the Alberta Muni's uh weekly report. And I noticed that the Athabasca County uh in in partnership with the Village of Boyle. They uh were approved of a a community for the rural renewal stream. For the Al- Alberta Advantage Immigration Program, uh but I saw in the last uh submission is there are voting to withdraw from that. And the reason being is they are finding it uh the uh they're experiencing challenges. With with the program itself that include approval process, uh a drain on resources and a mass amounts of communication from interested parties. Um so just curious uh if if our administration are are experiencing similar. Um that other communities are and uh I'm just kidding, yeah, any thoughts on from administration? And again, if if you're not prepared for, maybe it's something that you could bring or we can direct to bring a uh an update on it, but any thoughts?
Uh I will uh ask Mr. Russo to speak on this, if he wouldn't mind.
But I can see you, I'm interested to members of committee. I'm not directly involved in, though I was part of the application process to get us to the point. Um there's a committee that has been established, but I have had inquiries to my role in the town that it's slowed down. Um they are administrative sort of burdens attached to it because this was added to staff members of the town. I think at this point, based on what I've heard internally, that we are only considering um candidates that are in candidate's borders. And that those that are outside of Canada get a support letter, um has been paused for now until they could work through the backup that's kind of the experience.
Okay, okay. And is it, I guess, and and if I may, Mr. Chair, just to follow up, but I I did indicate whether or not it was a in the council. Brought it forward or for administration, but I guess if there's, I and this is just my thoughts on it, but if we're experiencing this. Um I I hope that administration brings that to council's attention, so, because it sounds like it's not just these communities. But it's other communities experiencing challenges as well, so. And that's all, that's the only question I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Any or any other comments or questions for the regarding the CEO reporting it says? Okay, nothing from committee. We do have one closed session item if we could. Mayor Michaels.
He was the chair, like I moved to go into close session.
Mayor Michaels, we will move into close session with uh. Chair. Oh, sorry, Ms. Duke, did you have a? Oh, Ms. Duke, did you have a comment or question before we move on?
I did. Can you hear me all right there?
Uh we can, yeah.
Oh, great. Uh okay, so yes, thanks to Mr. Russo for answering the question about the rural renewal stream. Uh currently, Hinton is experiencing mo- moderate, I would say, not low but not high volumes of correspondence. But we did limit, the committee did limit its approval process to workers that are already in Hinton. That have our have work uh permits and visas to be in Canada. There is still a lot of correspondence that comes from um outside the country, but we have a stock email response that we send for that. And currently, the program is quite feasible and we're happily progressing. We have about seventy um endorsed candidates in Hinton right now. Which was, which is a surprising number of uh people working in Hinton that have work permits. So it's been a, I think, a very successful program. There has been some um. Updates sort of of uh operating highlights that have been uh included in some of the um operating highlights in the past month. So if you look back, you'll find some details there as well.
It's great. Thank you for that additional information. Okay, if there's nothing for further, sorry, Mayor Michaels had moved that council for the committee move into closed session. There's no comments or questions. Okay, we can see that direction, please. Uh motion that committee move into closed session, uh the committee please hold now. Here unanimously, we'll go to closed session with a seven minute break. Thank you.
You have to.
Uh in July, yeah, yeah. Welcome to test soon, yeah. Had to nerd it out, you know?